Okay, it's six o'clock, so I'll call the meeting to order. I'll ask everybody to stand for the pledge, follow my moments of silence. Ask if the landing can lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be seated.
Amen.
First on the agenda is the approval of the agenda. Do we have a motion?
I so moved.
Do we have a second?
A second.
Any discussion? All in favor, seeing as I'm stating aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have recognition. Mr. Chairman, I think we have Jill Graham with us here tonight and going to recognize the Regional Southwest Virginia Camp Code, Regional Pitch Fest. So Jill, I'll turn that over to you.
At this time, Ms. Emily Ball would like to introduce these ladies and tell you what they are here to present.
Hi, my name is Emily Ball. I'm from Elydale, and I have Kelly Odom with me tonight. She's from Pennington. This is our third year to have camp at Pennington. It is sponsored through Streamwise and Apple Swift, and students come to learn about coding, and they also develop a prototype for an app. And so tonight, we have Bethamine, and we also have Heidi with us, and they're going to introduce to you what they presented as their app prototype.
So I'm Heidi, and...
It's not doing the same thing.
You might just have to show them the iPad and let them see it from there. Okay? Ms. Odom can hold it up, and you all can go through it. How's that? Welcome to World of Technology.
Maybe you don't hold it up because you guys are tapping. You guys have to touch.
We can touch it if you're good.
You're good.
So, we figured out one of the problems in our region is homelessness in humans and in animals. So we thought we could make an app to help stop slash prevent it. And so this is our app, Helping Homeless.
This is our app icon. It has a hand with a paw on the inside, and it recognizes inside the paw.
And if you was to click on our icon, a view would pop up that says, "Helping the Homeless: An App to Prevent People and Animals." An app to help prevent homelessness in people and animals. If you click the Get Started button on the screen, a login screen will pop down. You would enter your email and password and click Next.
This is our homepage, home page, where we have four tabs, which is Home, Animal Shelter, Homeless Shelters, Animal Shelters, and Donations.
If you was to click on our Homeless Shelters tab, a screen will pop up with names, addresses, and phone numbers. If you was to click on those...
It takes you to...
It'll take you to the link of the shelter or whatever. And if you go to our Animal Shelter page...
It's basically the same thing. It's programmed the same way.
If you go to Donate, this is the annually donated, and if you could click the arrow on the donations page, this is where you would be able to donate food, water, etc.
Et cetera.
To both humans and animals. And if you click on our Settings page...
We have Tip Size, Account, Notification, Privacy, Read-Allow, Language, Help and Support, and About This App.
If you click Here, About This App, it'll tell you our journey in our... Like, we had this app previously, and it was not so good, so we fixed it, and we made it colorblind accessible and read aloud accessible, and this just tells you how to use it and everything. Do you guys have any questions?
It's pretty awesome. What's the name of it?
Helping Homeless.
Helping Homeless.
And you made the app...
Yes.
Wonderful.
So I can know the app's stored in time there?
It's just the prototype right now.
Prototype, okay.
Good job.
Yeah.
I love that idea.
Thank you.
Pretty impressive.
Yes.
Thank you.
We just wanted to thank the Gifted Program for sponsoring this. Like I said, it's been going on for three years. Some of these ladies have been with us for several years in a row, and they were able to go to UVA Wise in August and present their app on the main stage. So they've really made us proud. They did a great job. Thank you so much.
Thank you. So next on the agenda is public. Sure?
Yes.
Okay, we have a public comment, and limited to three minutes. So anybody who wants to comment, don't go after people or do anything unnecessary. Please come up and share your feelings.
Hi, my name is Carrie Myers-Hendricks, and I graduated from Lee High in 2003. Thank you for this opportunity to speak with you today. I'm here together with my family and others from the community who support this cause to ask the school board to allow homeschool children to participate in elementary and middle school sports. As you know, VHSL currently does not allow homeschoolers to participate in sports at the high school level. However, according to their handbook, participation for younger ages is not governed by VHSL, but rather is controlled by the local school board. That means you have the power to authorize it for Lee County. Now, I could stand here and talk about the many benefits this would bring to the homeschool children in our area. After all, education can take many forms, and participation in sports can be a great educational tool. It teaches important life lessons like teamwork, discipline, and leadership skills, all values that align with the mission of public education. We could talk about how this will provide opportunities these kids won't have otherwise, given our remote location and the small amount of homeschooling families in the area, barely enough to form a team, let alone a league. These are all valid ways, your decision would be a blessing to our homeschooling families, but that's not the only thing I want to address. You see, this decision will give both ways, and I would argue that the greatest benefit will go to the community as a whole, including the public school system, and here's why. For one, it will enrich the athletic programs because it allows school teams to source from a wider pool of athletes. Now, competition is not something to be feared, but rather a way to raise the bar for everyone. As a former Division One athlete and having a 10-year playing career overseas, I can attest to this firsthand. In fact, we've recently seen a great example of this in cross-country, how the school teams can actually suffer from homeschoolers not being allowed to participate. At the Arrow B Meet, two homeschoolers finished first and third in the girls' middle school run. Because homeschoolers must run unattached, their points do not count for the team. Had their points counted, Lee Middle Girls would have finished first as a team, but instead, the first-place trophy went home with Union. Secondly, when you allow homeschoolers to participate in school sports at a young age, you enable them to make friends, bond with their coaches, and fall in love with their sport. Likewise, the parents will also forge connections with other parents. This fosters good school-community relations, which means more volunteers to help with fundraisers, more families attending sporting events of all kinds and at all levels, and dare I say, the more chance those kids will eventually step into the public school system when VHSL rules kick in. By allowing them to participate early and forge those bonds, you will have made that step so much easier. On a practical note, we've heard a voice that liability concerns around the insurance policy are a big obstacle, but if we follow the example of our neighbors in Tennessee, where waivers or proof of insurance are widely accepted, I'm sure we can find a simple solution. Sports are community builders, and we're talking about neighbors and friends, families running local businesses who pay taxes and vote, who sit beside you in church. More importantly, we're talking about opportunities for local kids. That's why we believe your decision to allow homeschooler participation in school sports will have tremendous benefits for our community as a whole. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, I will say, I talked to Carrie, and I told her that I didn't have it as an item on the agenda because I think you all had some questions for Mr. Sturgill. You could come back out of executive session and add that to the agenda if that's your all's choice, but I knew she was coming to speak, and I had told her I wasn't going to put it on there until she spoke, and I think you all had the answers from our attorneys, so that is your all's choice if you want to do that after executive session. Okay.
Could I ask a question to Carrie? Carrie?
Yes.
What are your plans, those of your homeschooling that want your children to play? What are they for when they get older up in high school?
Well, I can't speak for every homeschooling family. Well, I have a list here. I can't speak for every homeschooling family, of course, but if they're like our family, we just look at it year by year, and we assess, is this something we want to continue? Does it feel right for our kids? And we're not opposed to sending them to public school at some point. I mean, I can attest that I received a great education at Lee High. I was well-prepared for college, so it's not that we... There's animosity or something towards public schools. I just feel like for our family, the quality time with our kids when they're so young is valuable, and you never get that back. And I think that's a big reason that a lot of families choose to homeschool, is that they can be more intimately involved with their kids' education.
Can I ask, curriculum? What curriculum do you currently use? If you don't mind, or do you make your own? I'm just asking.
Are you just curious?
I'm just curious.
Okay, sure. Well, we have a blended curriculum. Our family does, because we're in a pretty unique situation. For example, we're blending what our kids would normally learn in Belgium, plus what they would learn here. So for example, just give some examples, they are currently learning their third and fourth languages because Belgium has three official languages, just to give an example. So yeah, I mean, I can't speak again for every homeschooling family, but there are a wide variety of options out there, and for us, we are blending the program because of our unique situation.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Next, we have the consent agenda. Somebody else will speak?
Good evening. My name is Josh Terry. I'm here as a parent and advocate for allowing homeschool students to participate in elementary and middle school sports also here in Lee County. I believe this is a meaningful opportunity to strengthen our community and foster inclusion among our children. As a father of two homeschoolers, I have seen firsthand how valuable these experiences can be. When homeschool students join a team, nothing about the structure or schedule of these programs change. What does change is the opportunity for more local kids to connect, collaborate, and grow together, building friendships and learning teamwork in a shared environment. This isn't just a hypothetical. Last year, my children participated in Lee Middle Track Team, and Carrie's daughter participated in basketball, which she coached, and these experiences were overwhelmingly positive, not just for the homeschoolers, but also for the teams as a whole. The camaraderie, the teamwork, and the shared success was real and impactful. We understand there are legal considerations involved with this situation, and we're fully committed to meeting any requirements necessary to make this possible. We're also willing to cover any costs associated with the participation. We've explored other options, but the nearest club team is Abington and Kingsport, and as you all know, that's an hour each way at least, two hours round trip, and for most families, it's just not feasible, working and having to travel to practice. We truly... What we truly want is to be part of this community. My children may not attend Lee County's school, but they are still Generals. We cheer for the Generals. We fundraise for the Generals. We volunteer our time for the Generals. My small business donates to the Generals and the Pioneers. Why? Because we are members of this community and want to see our county and schools continue to be successful. We're eager to work with the board to find a path forward, one that opens access to homeschoolers and enriches the athletic programs of Lee County. Thank you for your time and your consideration.
Hi, my name's Kristy Taylor, and I am a teacher at Jonesville Middle School, and I wanted to share a letter that actually our students that actually participate and play alongside these homeschoolers, their perspective and what they think. Over 20 students signed this paper anxious, and some of them are here in support of this, so I wanted to read this letter from them. To whom it may concern, as student athletes within Lee County, we have profoundly benefited from the opportunity to learn and grow with the Hendricks family. Marty, Carrie, Lucy, and JJ are part of our community and our family. Marty and Carrie serve in so many capacities, providing opportunities for young people that have never been available. Lucy and JJ have become our friends and teammates. Unfortunately, the VHSL does not allow homeschoolers to participate in sports at the high school level. Our locality has adopted this policy for all levels of athletics. As community members directly affected by this decision, we humbly ask the board to overturn this policy, allowing homeschool students to participate in athletics outside those dictated by VHSL. This policy limits athletes within our community from participating alongside their peers as there are very few activities outside of the school system in our area. We want more students to participate as it allows us to be more competitive, provides camaraderie, and encourages growth as individuals and as athletes. The more that participate, the more that we can learn and improve. Thank you for your time and consideration. And I'll give this to you guys, so you can... You guys can keep this with all their signatures and everything.
All right, I wouldn't take up too much of your time. I just wanted to read a letter that Coach Dwayne Stafford wrote up, and he couldn't be here because he's with the cross-country team right now. So he says, "To the school board members, my name is Dwayne Stafford, coach of the Lee Middle and Elementary Cross Country Programs. I would like to offer my thoughts on homeschool children participating in our middle school sports programs. Speaking for cross-country in particular, it is difficult to field a full team of runners in the middle school programs. I have been to the schools and asked the children to participate in cross-country with minimal success. Having the ability to reach out to the homeschool children of the community would be a big benefit to our program. I have had the opportunity to be around several homeschool children and their parents. Those families would be such an asset to our small communities program. The children are among the best mannered children I have ever coached, and they would certainly make us a stronger program, not only in performance, but they would also have a positive impact on the character of the other athletes as well. I would ask that you please consider allowing homeschool children to participate in our middle school programs. Thank you so much. Sincerely, Dwayne Stafford." Thank you for your...
Hello, my name is Holly Ture. My husband and I, we have homeschooled our oldest two daughters since they were in kindergarten. We have a 12-year-old who is in the seventh grade and a 10-year-old who is in the fifth grade. We are not and have never been against public education. We're both products of Lee County, and like Carrie said, we've received a wonderful education. My mother also taught almost 30 years within the Lee County school system. We made a personal decision to homeschool our children based on a conviction from God to establish a firm biblical foundation in all aspects of our children's education. Because we live in the state of Virginia, that decision has come at the cost of our children's ability to participate in sports at our local public schools. However, if we lived 30 miles south in Tennessee, our children would have the opportunity to participate in public school sports from kindergarten through 12th grade. The Organization of Virginia Homeschoolers website states that families in less populated parts of the state where there are few team sport opportunities outside of the public schools and not enough homeschooled athletes to form independent teams are especially adversely affected by the VHSL's ruling to not allow homeschool participation. The percentage of students that are homeschooled that would like to participate in a sport is small. The distance Lee High has to travel to play within their own district goes all the way to Bristol, Virginia. When I was a student athlete, we had to travel all the way to Marion. Imagine the difficulty in finding enough homeschool girls the same age interested in the same sport living in an area that made it easy enough for everyone to come to We are aware that the decision to allow homeschool children to participate in public school sports ninth through 12th grade is not in your hands, but in the hands of the Virginia High School League, and that's a much bigger fight. However, you do have the power to allow Lee County's homeschool children to participate in public school sports at the elementary and middle school level. Sports at elementary and middle school levels are mainly about teaching the fundamentals of the sport and the development of the necessary skills in each athlete. Sports can be another avenue of education as it teaches discipline, how to win, how to lose, how to work in a team. Allowing homeschoolers to participate will not take away, but only add to our current programs. Iron sharpens iron. Public school sports are about education, development, and community. The community aspect is huge. My girls love to run track and cross-country. There are no other opportunities to do that within our area, except that in the public schools. They love basketball and softball as well. Yes, they can play on a little league team or a travel team, but to play for a team within your community that represents, yes, a school, but maybe even more so the community, is even better. In the Lee County School Board Policy Manual, Section K, which is titled "School Community Relations," goals for school community relations states the following. "The Lee County School Board recognizes that good school-community relations are essential to securing public input and public support for educational programs. The School Board will set goals and standards for school-community relations and regularly evaluate its relationship with the public and its programs for maintaining open channels of communication and good relations with parents, community, organizations, the business and industrial sector, and the community at large. Through its School Community Relations Program, the School Board will encourage the community to, one, take an active interest in the schools and participate in school activities; two, place a high priority on education and make funds available for an educational system that supports learning for all children; and, three, establish partnerships with the schools to enhance learning opportunities. The School Board's goals, as stated above, are our same goals. We want to participate in school activities. We have a high priority on education, and we would love to establish partnerships with you to enhance learning opportunities. I am sure if we all work together, we can figure out a solution to the insurance issue."
Any other public comments?
Good evening, everyone. Jeremy Fendergraph, Principal, Jonesville Middle School. I thought it, with all this being said, it'd be fair to hear an administrative perspective on this issue, and I want to start by saying that these folks have laid it out so well, I won't repeat a lot of what they said, but I think Holly really touched on something that's at the essence of this for me. And that's that most of these folks are, again, what they said, they have nothing against our school system. They have, because of religious convictions, chosen a different path, and I absolutely admire them for that. But if we figure out the loophole and get the legality and the insurance figured out on this, not only are we going to be getting some wonderful children, but we have a couple other principals in here that could attest to this, and having been in the high school setting for many years and now the middle school, it's getting harder and harder to find people that we want to expose to our children, whether it's in PTO, whether it's in coaching. These are the very people we need to expose to our kids. These people are the heartbeat of our community. So I think, and Mr. Dean and I have talked about this, knowing it's just a legal issue, I think this is an issue. We need to figure out what that is. We need to figure out the legality of it and take care of these folks and bring our community together, just like they've so well-spoken here tonight. I just want to say a great job to all of them. It's impressive. Thank you all.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Dean, members of the board, Phil Hensley, District 3, and in regard to the homeschool and what they're discussing, as usual, what I'm talking about is money. You're looking at over $2 million sitting here in potential ADM. If there's a way for students to participate, they have to be enrolled in a participating VHSL school. That can be done through the county's Virtual Academy. And in addition to that, these students may want to take part in some other activities that our schools have. I know right now, we have some homeschool students participating at the vocational school in ROTC. That's allowed. If a student is enrolled in a Virtual Academy, homeschool students can take the vocational classes at the vocational school. That drives Volk Ed money, and that drives ADM money. There's a lot of money sitting here. Thank you.
And Mr. Chairman, I will clarify, there was legislation last year that allowed homeschool to participate in the ROTC at the high school level, so that had changed in the past. So everybody understands how that's allowed. Okay. Anybody else?
My name's Sonny Brooks. I'm from District 1. I've got a little unique perspective because I coached against these girls right here, so I know they're pretty good at what they do. But I think we need to adapt to the homeschool. It's kind of... We need to adapt to it some way, somehow, because it's here, and they do a great job with their kids. You can tell that, but I think we may need to adapt to that some way, somehow. But another question I have, where are we in our embezzlement investigation? Can we talk about that? Mr. Heinz, you made a post back in June that said that you could talk about that.
I'm talking about what I know, which is nothing more than what I knew initially. State police haven't come to me with any questions or any information. I can tell you that.
We don't know anything. We're still out there.
I'm just speaking for myself. I don't know what...
Mr. Brooks, last time I spoke to the investigator, he said it was an ongoing investigation.
Okay, so back when you made your post, you said that Mr. Dean had contacted you on June 18th. Something closer. Did you contact all the other board members?
This isn't a question and answer. Is this board comment or public comment, whatever?
Which one you want me to do?
Well, I mean, I'm not going to sit here and be interrogated.
I'm just asking questions.
No, you're just a troublemaker. Let's just be honest.
Me?
Yeah, absolutely. I said it. If you can't...
Well, I resent that. Why would I be a troublemaker? I went through this whole school system. I'm just asking questions that need to be answered.
Do you want to make comments? Make comments.
All right, so I understand that you're wanting to... You're wanting to know where we are on the case.
Yeah, I just want to know where we're at.
Everybody is. Legally, we can't talk about the case until state police says they're filled. What Mr. Heinz says is what he wants to do, but what I do not want in this room tonight is all these kids to see grown adults not act like adults. We're grown. We don't need to do that, so we can be respectful in our comments.
I agree with that.
I know, but we don't need to do that.
Let me say, what I told you is all I know. I mean, I don't have anything else to add to that.
But I don't like to call me a troublemaker. I mean, just asking the questions that you asked.
Well, I think you'll be okay, so, you know what?
But I mean, I just... Where are we on this? We just... We can't say.
I told you, I don't know anything to tell you. I wouldn't say if I knew, but I don't know anything other than that there's an investigation. Nobody's come to me.
No one has been removed from their position or administratively, either, has anybody noticed that?
Time's up.
Time's up.
Anybody else? Think about it, folks. Anybody else want to comment? All right, if not, we will go to board comments. Do we have any board comments?
Yes, I would like to mention Lee High School golf team on their way to state first of the week, and will be playing Tuesday at Tappahannock, Virginia. They won district at Abington. They were seasonal champions, which they received two trophies that day. And then region was held at Cedar Hill Country Club, and Lee High won the region as well. This makes three years in a row out of four years, and we won state one year, runner-up the next year, and we're hoping to win it again this year. So I'd like to wish them well and safe travels for everyone.
You did a good job.
Yes, they have.
Good luck.
Anybody else? I...
I want to say I appreciate the parents and the community members and the kids for being here tonight in favor of the homeschool kids being allowed to play sports and being involved. Maybe we can work on that. I don't know if there's a way around it. I'm willing to listen to it and all, but the way that that was brought to us and every conversation I've had with several of the individuals, they have been tremendously respectful, and they have petitioned us in the right manner of doing this. So I appreciate that.
Okay, I want to mention that Scott Litten passed away since the last board meeting. He used to help Lee High with the chains and stuff. The football games did that for, Jeremy, how many years? Fifty years. Wow.
He was recognized at a football game and given a flag.
That's right. So we lost him since our last meeting. Just wanted to point out and endorse his family and so they would know that. Anybody else have more comments?
If not, we'll move to consent agenda, which consists under Section A, approval of minutes from the September 11th, 2025 regular meeting; under B, approval of claims and expenditures; under C, approval to set the date of kaleidoscope to April 24th, 2026; D, approval of Head Start policy and procedures, CA, CFP, FY26, corrective action plan amendment; E, update of LCSBP, EB, School Crisis Emergency Management and Medical Emergency Response Plan; and F, authorize the Division Superintendent to field vacancies existing or occurring between October 9th, 2025 through November 13th, 2025. Do we have a motion?
Second.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by stating aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Reports of the board. We have reports of the board.
I want to report that I went and spoke to the seventh-grade civics class of Ms. Christie Gully at Elydale the other day, and I know other community members are going to be doing the same. I appreciate the invitation, and they're learning about local government and how that, how the local governments, boards work together, and we're working on something, hopefully through this, trying to get some of the civics classes to actually come and attend a school board meeting and see how it is and the inner workings of it and just kind of watch. And I think they're wanting to go to the courthouse to see some of the proceedings there and stuff, so shout out to them. Very great group of kids, and they were asking some very good questions, but I really enjoyed my time with them.
Anybody else? Next, are reports of the student representatives. Samantha, you want to start us out this week, this month?
Thank you. So first off, as I mentioned in the last meeting, the golf season came to an end, and they won the region 1D championship, and they came extremely close to earning a state spot this year. Our Spirit Week was September 22nd through the 26th, and our themes were Sports Fan Day, Surfers vs. Bikers, Mathletes vs. Athletes, Pyjama Day, and Red, White, and Blue Day. The students seemed to have a very fun time participating in these days, and our homecoming football game was on Friday, September 26th. Senior Maddie Markham was crowned our queen, and sophomore Allison Long was crowned our princess. On Thursday, October 2nd, the seniors had a powder puff football game to raise funds for the senior trip. The game was played seniors versus juniors, and it ended with a score of 18 to 13 with the seniors winning. Our JV football team is currently leading an undefeated season. On Monday, September 29th, they beat the Radco Eagles 8 to 0. The cross-country team is also having a wonderful season with every meet ending in a victory or coming close to one. And student Ian Sandifer was selected for the DAR Good Citizens Award. Overall, it's been a very nice time, and we just hope everything goes as well as it was.
Thank you. Molly, you want to bring us up to date on Lee High?
Yeah. Lee High has been very positive the last two months that school has been in session. With sporting activities, our Lee High General's Competitive Cheer plays first at the G-Town Throwdown on Saturday, October 4th. The Lee High General's Marching Band plays third in the 3A Division on Saturday, October 4th at the London Pine Band Festival, and the Majors play second overall within all divisions. Cross-country has a meet today, Thursday, October 9th, at the Tasewell Invitational. Our football team will play Marion at home tomorrow on October 10th at Five Star Stadium at 7:00 PM. Competitive Cheer and Band both have competitions this Saturday, October 11th. Our golf team, as Nancy mentioned, will be playing at the state championship on Tuesday, October 14th at Hobbs Whole Country Club in Tappahannock. Some school activities have been going on. We've had several colleges come to our school this week and speak with some of the seniors. We have some students spotlight for personal, like me personally, the people that I know. Many of seniors have been applying as well as being accepted into colleges. I feel like that is a good outlook on the representation of Lee High School. Gracie Garrett has officially signed with Alice Lloyd Softball, and many students applied for the Coca-Cola Scholars Foundation Scholarship. It's a $20,000 scholarship that's awarded to 150 students each year. There were 107,000 applicants in the first round. They selected roughly 1,230 applicants to move to the second phase, and I have successfully made it to the second phase. I will complete the second phase of that application.
Congratulations. Congratulations. All right. Next, we have reports of the Division Superintendent. Mr. Dean?
Mr. Chairman, first enrollment finished September was 2,704. The budget was based on 2,730, so we're a little bit below that. If that trend stayed, it would be kind of like what I spoke to the Board of Supervisors about at their meeting last month. This is where Scott County got the money that they use to fund EMS. Scott County's school system budgeted more than they actually had the kids. That money was given back to the Board of Supervisors, and that's what I was told was used to fund EMS. So, you know, we're looking at something, I don't know exactly how much money it'll be, because that number will fluctuate between now and March 31st, but right now the number is below the budget number of 2,730. Operations, transportation update, those are in your packet. Do you have any questions on those? What's happening at the schools and on the transportation side? School calendar development, I was going to ask you all maybe for a little guidance. Do you want us to do like we've done in the past and develop with the Communication Committee some calendars and send out to the school division? Or do you all want us to take this year's calendar, convert it to the dates for next year, and just bring you one calendar to vote on? Or what would be your all's guidance on that?
I have a question. We've got some principals here. What do you all think about that?
I'll speak for you.
I can speak for the principal and talk about real life. They do wish there was a little break in October.
I've heard the same thing.
Yeah, that's the only thing that I've got. Of course, they, you know, they get their full week at Thanksgiving, you know, and remember the thing, this is amazing, you know?
And I'll tell you, the way to get days in October is to take a couple of days from that Thanksgiving week, right? Unless you want to put school starting the first day of August. And I'll tell you, it won't make everybody happy. I think we've had 15 calendars in the past, and you would not make everybody happy. So I'm just looking for a little guidance before we spend a lot of time on the calendar situation.
Well, is that the same complaint that y'all have heard?
Not many complaints. I think the big thing is, years ago, we weren't administrators, I mean, years ago, but years ago, employees didn't get to say so. So first of all, thanks for asking the input. Second, what Mr. Dean says is right. We don't need to send out six, eight, 10 calendars and just, the current one we've got is good. It needs to be tweaked just a little, if to include a date or two, do that, but otherwise, what Mr. Dean said, just move the dates to the next year and roll with it.
That's good to hear.
Great. The biggest thing I had complaints about this year, we started to err. Back when, this is years ago, I was there, years ago, Mr. Dean, right? We'd always start right the last of August, you know, the first being and everything.
And Gary, I can tell you a little bit about why we do that, is we're a block, we try to finish the semester before Christmas, because they take those SOLs at the time they finish that semester. I can tell you, most teachers I've talked to do not want to come back after Christmas and take SOLs, because they'll say that a lot of students forgot a lot of things over that two-week break. So you try to get close to 90 days in that first semester. We typically get anywhere between 86 and 90, but that's why we try to get as much as you can in the first semester, because they don't want to come back after and try to do those SOLs.
Scott County, I'm sorry. Scott County starts the 15th through 16th of August every year. That's what they do, but that semester doesn't end until after Christmas break. So they have to come back and have, you have a week or a week and a half to finish. I think that would be tough.
Out of tag. Yes.
And the other thing is, Gary, is we get out a lot early at the end of the school year, and nobody complains about that.
Yeah, I was just going to say, Mr. Webb, there'd be more people complaining if we don't get out until June.
Yeah, that's when we start hearing stuff.
Okay. If teachers are, the only complaint is about the fall break, could you give the option on the calendar of fall break with a modified Thanksgiving schedule and just have the two options? A or B? Pick your B.
We could do that. In a way, I, whatever y'all think.
Now, and I say that, it's not been like behold the masses and says, oh my goodness, we need something now. It's just been a hang, one or two, and you're like, oh.
October is typically the one month that you have no break in, because even if you don't schedule a break in the spring, typically, snow gives you a break. January, March, January, February, March, so.
Roll with it, because then you have typically a lag day at the very beginning of the month.
I've read that a lot with Thanksgiving, for me.
Yeah, same.
And as a teacher, October is always a long minute.
Yes.
But you're getting the house too.
Yes, that's right.
All right, Mr. Chairman, we'll get to work on that. October has a number of days and awareness weeks and months. I'll run through those briefly. October is bullying prevention month. There's a declaration from the governor over there and from you all about bullying in the schools. It's also an issue online, so we asked everybody to watch that. October the 2nd is National Custodian Day. Want to appreciate the custodians and the work they do in our facilities and keep them clean and make sure the students arrive every day. October the 5th through the 11th is Fire Prevention Week. I think their theme this year is about lithium ion batteries. Make sure you buy the right ones, make sure you charge them properly, and make sure you dispose of them properly. I will say that is the longest-running public health observance in the country, started in 1922 after the fire in Chicago. October the 6th, National Coaches Day. This started in 1972 with Richard Nixon, just recognizes the coaches, the work they do with students, and, you know, I coached sometime back, never got to coach Kerry, but I did get to work with Holly on volleyball, and you get to spend a lot of time with those students, and a lot of times, those are the people that those students go to when they have problems, and we want to appreciate our coaches and everything that they do. October the 6th through the 10th, Farm to School Week. Want to appreciate all of the farmers and the fresh fruits and vegetables that they grow, and we get into the cafeteria. So that is, there's a news release online about that from the Department of Education. October the 6th through the 12th is Dyslexia Awareness Week. Talks about that issue that a lot of people have. I think it actually affects approximately 10% of the population, so need to help anyone that we know that has that. We worked with a number of students with that condition. October the 10th, World Mental Health Day, just an awareness day about the challenges that all people have with mental wellness, so we want to recognize that. October the 13th through the 17th is National School Lunch Week. Want to appreciate all of the work that our cafeteria does to make sure that our students have breakfast and lunch every day and the work that they do. Proud of that. October the 23rd through the 31st is National Ribbon Week. Just want to make sure everybody encourages the youth and adults to commit to a healthy and drug-free lifestyle. October the 20th through the 24th, National School Bus Safety Week. You know, I've said that in the past, if you ever want to watch a scary video, is when you watch a car pass a bus with the red lights out and a student's getting ready to walk across the road and how close we came to having a major accident. So just ask everyone to watch out when the buses are on the road. October is Learning Disabilities Awareness Month. Just be aware that there's a number of adults and students who have learning disabilities, and the awareness is just to make sure that everybody's aware of that and can work with anyone and provide the services that these people need. October is also Head Start Awareness Month. I think I see Ms. Baker back there in the back. Want to appreciate everything that Head Start does for our students. I think they work with approximately 200 Lee Countyans a year across the nation, 750,000 students annually, to give them a Head Start on school and a Head Start on life, so want to appreciate Ms. Baker and her team and everything they do for us. October is National Principal Month. As Mr. Heinz has said, we have, I think, three or four, I think I saw Mr. Brable back there somewhere, two administrators with us here tonight. Want to appreciate everything they do. I think they're often like me, they don't make people happy all the time, but I think that they have the best interest of these students out and do what they can, and I appreciate everything that you all do. October is also Cyber Security Awareness Month. Just aware that we had a cyber attack in Lee County Public Schools a few years back. It's not a pleasant thing to ever go through, but want to encourage everyone, because I think everyone pays bills online, everyone banks online, just be careful with what you do with that and make sure you're aware of any red flags. I think Ms. Sumter's back there somewhere. Appreciate everything that our technology crew does to keep us safe from that. And last, October is Breast Cancer Awareness Month. I think everyone knows or had been impacted with someone with breast cancer awareness, and we just want to recognize that as well. And I think that's all I have.
Okay. Do we have any unfinished business?
We do not.
Okay. Next, we'll move on to action discussion items under A, SOL cut scores.
All right, Mr. Chairman, I think most of these are discussion items. I put a packet in there, and I think Karen has it online. On September the 25th, the Virginia Board of Education changed the SOL cut scores for all reading and math across all grade levels. What this was, it's an attempt to raise the bar, to increase us and put us on a level with the NAEP scores, which is more of a national test. I gave you a timeline there where this came from, started back in April, May, and then they passed it in September. Traditionally, SOL scores were based from 0 to 600, with 400 being passing for every test, 500 being advanced score. That is changing. Now, Samantha and Molly, I guess, are the fortunate ones. The seniors this year follow under the old standard, so they did, we advocated hard for them not to be changed in the middle of the game that they were playing, but if you go on across through the packet, it talks about why we're doing this and why the state did it. And starting this spring, for everyone who's not a senior, the scores for proficient will change, and there will not be a standard score for every test. So 400 will not be the passing score. It varies from 444 to 451 to 479. It's kind of all over the board. Low basic changes, basic changes, proficient changes, and advanced changes. They're going to have a stakeholder listening session. Still haven't produced the date on that, but I suspect it will come to the Higher Ed Center in Abington, so everybody can give their input on that. The question now is how long they phase this in. They are looking at a four-year or a five-year phase in. I included that here in a little later. But one thing they did want to make sure everyone was aware of, that when they do this, there will be a dramatic drop in passing scores. The state gave us the example of Illinois, Massachusetts, and Tennessee, and you can see, if you look on that, Illinois went down 21 to 37 points in math, and that is close, I think, to the prediction that they're giving for Virginia scores when they do this. Based on last year's scores, when they did the math, they're predicting only 37% of our students across the state will pass the third-grade math reading. It's like 44 in the math third grade, and I put those in there for you, but there's going to be a dramatic drop. We're trying to, you know, do everything we can to help the administrators, the teachers, but I wanted you all to be aware of what was getting ready to happen, and that there's going to be some lower test scores because of this. It's going to be a phase-in period, that's a little later, and it's going to be a matter of whether we phase it in over four years or we phase it in over five years. I will tell you that the superintendent's group across the state had advocated for an eight-year phase-in, but they narrowed it down to a four or five-year phase-in, so I included that in your packet. And then they plan to vote on the phase-in on October the 24th, which is a little surprising to me since they haven't scheduled the stakeholder meetings yet, how they're going to get all that done before then, but that is their plan. So any questions on cut scores? And I will back up just a second. I think this... I think Ms. Belcher copied, we had an email from another staff member at Jonesville that I think she put in your all's packets about homeschools. So I think that should be in your packets. Just want to make sure you all are aware of that. This one, edgenuity in online classes. I had been contacted by a number of parents. I had talked to guidance counselors at Lee High and at Thomas Walker. I've talked to some administrators of both schools. I think the schools would like to have a policy that maybe gives a little more definition to when students can take online classes. Example being given, like if you have chemistry and you have a person that teaches it in the building, should we allow a student to take an online course when the course is offered to be taught in person? Honors class is also a question. Should we ever offer an online honors class or should that only be offered in person? I just want to give you all a heads up that we may bring you all a policy in the future for you all to vote on. I'd like to work with the two schools and possibly the middle schools too. They do a little bit of edgenuity with eighth grade moving back. So definitely something that we may be talking about in the future. I just wanted to see if you all had any thoughts on that, kind of give you a heads up on that. All right, hearing none, move on. Talked about this, I think I mentioned this at the board of supervisors meeting last time, EMS at ballgames. I think the ambulance service and the rescue squads have been at the ballgames, I guess, as long as I can remember. They do that free of charge. And I talked to Chester Langley and I didn't want to bring him here tonight just because I didn't have it as an action item. I just wanted to have it as a discussion item, see if you all would entertain this. I put a sample from, I think it was California out there, that they had an agreement with the rescue squad or the ambulance service to pay them for that service when they come to football games. It's never been done in the past, but it is an option. I think I talked to Mr. Sturgill, it could be allowed. I talked to the auditor, it could be allowed. Just wanted to see if you all would entertain that and we could work with a, it has to be an appropriate amount that you can justify. So it would be like, you know, you figure out how much time you'd be at a ballgame, how much it would be for that night. Typically, they're at Thomas Walker and Lee High ballgames. So I just wanted to see if that was something you all would entertain. They said they do that kind of free of charge. Just wanted to see what you all's thoughts were on that.
Would it just be the high school, pardon me, the middle school names?
I think they've come to some of those. I don't know if they've come to all of them. It could be worked out, I guess. I know we've got a couple of administrators, former athletic directors. I don't know how much they came to the middle school. I think it was mainly the high school football.
Yeah, not, certainly not basketball. Maybe they would come to lead middle or your middle school football just because of the contacts for it. But we currently don't have any of those.
Football's basically all I know that we have them there. We're not basketball or volleyball, baseball, softball. It is football. For as long as I can remember, it's just been football. We do have them there, middle school football. Middle school, they be, or varsity, we have them there for all three injuries.
And I know I was at one Thomas Walker game this year that they had to bring English on the field for an injury. And I know at the last, I think I gave you all a heads up, at the last Lee High middle school game, I think a young man had his wrist broke, so.
I'd be willing to look at what we can do there.
So I'm just seeing if you all want me to do the legwork and talk to them and see if we can come up with something, work with Mr. Sturgill. I think there did need to be something probably in writing to go from there.
I think it'd be good.
All right, next, Internet Safety Survey and Awareness Training Initiative. This is Jesse Gillum. He is a former Lee High graduate. I want to say around 2015 is when he graduated. He wanted to be here tonight to present this. He is actually deployed, I think, at one of the National Guards locations that the president has sent the National Guard. He works with military police, National Guard. He's also got, I think, a master of science in cyber crime. He wanted to know if you all would allow him to do a survey? And I put a copy of the survey in there with you all. It's about 50 questions, a little over 50 questions. He said he would take that and then look at that and then present, maybe want to do a presentation for the students about the issues of cyber crime, cybersecurity, cyber bullying. He gave some examples, I think, in the packet that I gave you all about young people being blackmailed with people who are pretending to be other people. And I have no issue with it. I just want to make sure you all are good with it. I think it could be something, our students are on the phones a lot. They're on social media a lot. I don't know if these two young ladies spend a lot of time on the phone, but whether it's Instagram, Facebook, Snapchat, there's a potential there for a lot of activity that is questionable, a lot of blackmailing, a lot of things that could get people in trouble. A lot of parents do a great job with policing that. Some, I wish they would do more. But I don't think it would hurt for us to do some more training with our students. But I want to draw a blessing with that. So I guess that is an action item. I would ask you all to, for your blessing.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, signify by standing aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Let's play, I've got, Mr. Chairman, last month at the board of supervisors, Ms. Belcher, Ms. Willis and I and Mr. Williams went about the reappropriation. They tabled that. They, I think they kind of put it with the forensic audit. I think at least one of them said that they wasn't going to vote on anything until they had something in writing from you all about the forensic audit. That was the same night I stepped out, contacted, I think, all of you except Mr. Williams who was there. And at the time, I don't think they were able to give us an approximate cost of what a forensic audit cost. I have since received an email from Mr. Wright who has said that from the preliminary stuff that he's looked at, I guess, the bids that they have received, he's saying $125,000 would cover the school system's part of the forensic audit unless there was more and kind of left it open-ended. I know there's some board of supervisors members here tonight. I did tell them that I think part of that money has to be given or re-appropriated. That would be the textbook money, the infrastructure and operations money, and the all-in money. The other money, which is about approximately $4 million, is at the discretion of the board of supervisors who either could reallocate that money to the school system for Lee County or could send it back to the state. So I just wanted to give you an update on that. I don't know if you all want to ask them any questions. I know they're here tonight about that or the audit or if they want to speak on that. But that's a discretion of the chair and the board. Is that number right? $125,000?
Okay. Would you like to see some action or a decision made?
I know you all asked me, that was one question you all asked me last time and I couldn't give you the answer. I can give you the answer on that. I think one of you asked me if I had been a part of any of it since they're asking you all to cover that. I have not. I wasn't part of the RFP, wasn't part of any of it. That was, that's their discretion and their decision and they put out the RFP. So that's all I can tell you all about.
Next, we'll, I'll move, go into closed session to discuss personnel of the Code of Virginia, Section 2.2, that's 3711A1, to discuss student discipline under Code of Virginia, Section 2.2, that's 3711A2. Scholastic records under Code of Virginia, Section 2.2, that's 3711A2. And consultation with legal counsel under Code of Virginia, Section 2.2, that's 3711A8. Do we have a second? Any discussion? All in favor, signify by standing aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We're now in closed session.